Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there it is.
How close am I going to need to get this? We're going to call this March 31st public hearing the order. First thing I want to ask Supervisor Baker to give us an invitation.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you today. Thank you for many blessings that you bestowed upon us in this world. We thank you for the rain that you've sent to replenish our water supplies as we go into the growing season. Lord, please be with the people that are hurting in this times, people that are in harm's way of the weather, the tornadoes, et cetera. Please be with the people that are in the war zone and things. We hope that it be your will that there can be peace someday in this world. Lord, as we gather here tonight, let us all be mindful of what you do for this county. Please let everybody be kind to one another as we speak and deliberate on the future of what we do on this budget. We ask thee in all these things that you provide for us, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to open and close all three public hearings, so we're not going to do an individual public hearing for each item. It's a public hearing for all of them. If you come up to speak, you can speak on any of those items that we have the public hearings for. That includes the associated tax rates for Tomsburg, Longtown, and Stone Creek, the Santeran districts, as well as our budget and tax rate increases. The tax rate increases being a five cent increase on real property, including local homes. That would take us from our current, which is fifty-four and a half cents. The proposed five cent increase would take us to fifty-nine and a half cents, which would be a nine point two percent increase. We are actually dropping the personal property tax. We're dropping the personal property tax by ten cents per hundred on personal property down the farm. And everything else is staying the same. So with that said, we have three minutes for speakers to come up and speak. We're going to have Evan Bass is going to call names up, who's going to call the first one, and then the second name, so that they can move forward to get closer, just trying to keep it smooth going through. You do not have to have signed up to speak, so after we get through the list of everyone who has signed up, if there's someone who's still wanting to speak, they can have three minutes to come back up again. I will say that if you wanted to speak on the budget and say Tomsburg, technically you'd be entitled to six minutes, so if you think we need it, we'll ask you to stop at three and then come back again and talk a second time if you can't get it all out in three minutes for everything that you wanted to cover on those three items. So with that said, I think we are ready to begin. But I will say that after tonight's hearing, our next meeting is Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, and that's when our budget deliberations will go to. It's April 5th in the boardroom, and we're going to consider for adoption or changes to what we have proposed. When we're back, we now open the public hearing.
How's this, is that?
Do it like a rock star.
Is that coming through? All right, our first speaker is Serona Urban, followed by Mark Wolf.
Good evening. Is this one on?
It's tampering.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, county administration. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and what I like most about what I have to say tonight is usually I'm coming begging and pleading, asking for more help in our office because we desperately need it as the court of record and all that we do, and I just want to thank you for putting into the budget this year one full-time position. And I just, I can't say thank you enough for that, and I actually did ask for two full-time, taking away our part-time, and you've granted a full-time with keeping my part-time. So I pledge to you that we're going to do our best to see what we can do with that, and I just want to thank you for putting that into our budget this year. Thank you.
All right, Mark Wolf, followed by Matthew Helsley.
I misunderstood, sir. I didn't, I signed up, I'm a rookie in these things, so.
All right, understood.
Good county start.
Matthew Helsley, followed by James McCarver.
Well, it's further down the list than that. See, I'm not here to address the growth of county government resulting in increased cost of that growth. You hear me?
We can, I'm not sure if they can.
Okay.
No, they can't, so try and get right into that later.
I'm really here to address the five cent increase in real estate tax. And to that end, without any significant modification in my home or property, my home's real estate assessment went up forty-three point seven percent in 2021, while the equalized tax rate of fifty-four point five cents only went down twenty-one percent. Good business spirit. At the current fifty-four point five cent rate that is approved by the Board of Supervisors, my Shenandoah County real estate tax for 2022 will actually be thirteen point five percent higher than what I paid in 2021. And again, that's without any modification in my property rates, that's just where things are going. The five cent increase that is being discussed here, or maybe not, is not a matter of pennies. It actually raises the tax rate by nine point one seven percent, which you say nine point two in your brochure. And the proposed rate of fifty-nine point five cents will increase my 2022 tax burden an additional ten point four percent to a total of twenty-three point nine percent beyond what I paid last year in 2021 for real estate tax. So for me, it's not a matter of pennies, it's a matter of hundreds of dollars. And again, I understand that, you know, that we need to pay more to grow the county, to grow the things that need to be grown, but without the five cents, I think I'm contributing the significant notice it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Helsley, followed by Corey Rader.
Good evening. I just came to ask a few questions. As the previous speaker said, yes, we're talking a matter of five cents. My question is, why does that five cents increase have to all fall on the owner of real estate in the county? Is there other ways of distributing that? I feel like it's unfair for the people who happen to own real estate in this county to be, you know, overly burdened with that increase. Certainly, we understand that there are, there is inflation that's going on here. We certainly understand that, yes, property values have been increasing. My also, my next follow-up question is, so what happens if there is some sort of bubble that bursts? And, you know, when would that be adjusted back down? My understanding is it's five years, I think, so if you could, six, okay. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Corey Rader, followed by Dan Walsh.
I've been living here thirty-two, my almost thirty-five years, should have done it here when I was a resident. I have a pretty solid knowledge of all the people in my age group by almost thirty-five. So having this younger group, our outlook on this budget attack is right here. We're pretty upset with the increases that were seen proposed. We feel like having graduated in 2005, 2006, that era, since we graduated, we hit multiple recessions, multiple setbacks, multiple this and that. It's been a pretty tough last twenty years. I mean, admittedly for a country, for people my age, this is kind of one of the final straws we're seeing in this county. A lot of us were considering moving out of state before this proposal was even brought up. Tennessee, West Virginia, North Carolina have all been listed as better options for living because of taxes. A lot of us grew up watching Robin Hood, Disney, the local friendly task collective come to the neighborhood. That's kind of what we're feeling like we're seeing. We do not want this to happen. I want my two girls to live here, I want to be able to afford to fix my house up. I mean, raise my family here, but the jobs aren't really here. Most people commute now to county to get the incomes needed to support these tax rates proposed. This is after seeing President Biden, his administration give us almost eight million dollars in capital that way. That should cover quite a lot of expenses needed that we're seeing, that's going to be divided into school, buildings, roads, et cetera, et cetera. I do know that last year, one of the few roads that I saw actually rebuilt, maintained, fixed up, was a couple miles section of the Conical Road. I'm sure there's a border, I haven't seen it. I've been along a lot of these roads in this county, haven't seen it. I've always come to the worst shape I've seen since I've started driving in the area at the age of fifteen years old, almost twenty years ago. So Stevens, represented by District of Maljia, I said the Conical Road, please run over this proposal. We need increases, understand due to inflation, cost of living is going up, we need better wages for people, teachers, I understand all that. Increase needs to happen, but it must happen in a sustainable way, something that people my age group and younger who are starting on families can afford. Please do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Walsh, followed by Wanda Cook.
Thank you, I'm Dan Walsh, I live at 211 Manor Drive in Edinburgh, I know all of you, but, you know, first, thanks for all your hard work in the budget. I think we should always start with that. I know whether I agree with you or not, it's a lot of work and it probably doesn't even pay minimum wage for what you're doing, so thank you for that. About seven years ago, I and some other parents became concerned because we felt our schools were underfunded, and we felt the empirical evidence supported the fact that our schools were underfunded, and we got people interested in that issue, and if you'd come to this meeting in 2015, there were probably about seven times as many people at that meeting as there's going to be at this one. In the years since about 2018, it's really turned around, and our schools have been adequately funded for pretty much every one of those years. Is it perfect? No, but we've also seen a commensurate uptick in our performance in those years, and I'm grateful to all of you sort of for your leadership in that. For some of you, it's not involved easy votes. I mean, you know, you've understood though that it's not about you, and it's not about politics, it's certainly not about national politics. It's about finding the intersection between what our kids need and what our county can afford. And I'm not saying that's an easy job, but I'm glad for those of you who've shown a leadership in making it truly about that. The current budget for schools this year would take advantage of Governor Youngkin's proposed five percent increase for teachers. We have to put up almost forty percent of the cost of that. If we don't do that, and other counties do, we're going to lose good teachers to surrounding districts. But it's not just teachers, it's bus drivers, it's custodians, it's administrators too, it's everybody in the chain that we have shortages of, and money won't completely solve that, but lack of money will exacerbate it. The social workers for the three campuses are funded with federal money, we need them, our kids have been through a lot. I admit, after two years, I think we're going to have to figure out what to do with them, and maybe they should be put on notice that we only have funding for a few years. But our kids have been through a lot the last few years, and I think having social workers in place to help them is a good thing. I, I'm sorry, our health benefits are not competitive either. This doesn't make us quite competitive with other counties in terms of the health benefits we provide staff, but it makes us better. And again, it reduces the pressure to go elsewhere. That kind of concludes my remarks on the schools. As an individual citizen, I'd just like to say, one thing I like about this budget is it ends the process of continuously spending down our rainy day fund to try and meet operating expenses. You know, it puts us on a path toward sustainability and rebuilding that, and I'll note that the first time I ever spoke before this board, as a past member anyway, I talked about the rate it already been set. Can't we use money from our overfunded rainy day fund to cover some of these operating expenses and next year come up with a sustainable source? We've gone a long way since then, but at least we're headed back in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wanda Cook, followed by Steve, I can't wait to make out your last name, so we'll have to.
I'm with him, it's my first time, sorry.
Okay, no problem. We share handwriting skills, I bet.
Good evening, members of the board. I would like to comment on the reassessment of the real estate and personal property tax here in the Shenandoah County. Our county is a small one, whose population is made up mostly of retired individuals and senior citizens on fixed incomes. We're not living in a county where wages and incomes could ever begin to compare with those of Northern Virginia. When the seniors do receive an increase in their income, which is little and far in between, the most of that money, it goes back to the government to cover increases in medical coverage. And with the increases, you would be lucky to receive ten dollars by the time their deductions are subtracted. That's true. Our county and the rest of the country are still trying to recover and deal with the COVID pandemic, as well as other major issues that our country's in trouble. Factories and businesses have closed, resulting in residents losing their jobs and incomes. As far as we know, there are no new factories, there are no new businesses that are coming here to replace that great loss. I have been told that there are two businesses in the county who is adding on to their plants. Number one is Mercury Plant in Strasburg, and the other is Bowman and Mount Jackson. The county will be lucky if these businesses have a total hire of one hundred people. That is a drop of water in the ocean. Today, with the price of gas skyrocketing, food prices rising faster than people's income, you'll be lucky if a ten dollar bill will buy you a gallon of milk and a loaf of bread. Now, I will give credit where credit is due. The board has done some adjustments on the real estate tax, but really, after seeing the proposal, the county is really not getting much of a break. Take for an example, if you have a car that is valued at twenty to thirty thousand dollars, you will be paying six, seven, and eight hundred dollars a year just for that car. That's not your personal property. Can you imagine the tax that would be on an electric car that would be valued at sixty thousand dollars or more? That may not sound like much to some people, but to those on a fixed income, it would mean the difference of paying your taxes, buying food, medication, paying your rent, mortgage, health insurance, vehicle insurance, homeowner insurance, and the list, it just goes on and on and on. We realize the position that the board is in, and we take that into account. However, you must also realize the position that your fellow citizens are in. At this point, it appears that the citizens are in a no-win situation. We realize and understand that the county needs funds to operate, but we're also aware that there are items in the budget that need to be visited. We understand that there's not any easy solution, but there are other answers, other avenues to be explored, and sometimes we just have to really, really dig deep to find those solutions. Let us all work together to make our county a place where we're all known as problem solvers. One suggestion, I've often wondered this, we are so close to eighty-one, what about a distribution center that's in some of these other counties? Has anyone considered this, or are we a county that is only interested in building apartments and building houses? I do thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration, and I thank you for your job that is endless, and sometimes it seems to be fruitless. Thank you so much.
Karen Potowski, followed by Charles King.
Hi, I'm Karen, Pepper Road, Mount Jackson. A couple things I want to say, and I was looking at your handout here, and I don't understand if there's a typo or not, but on the backside, we've got the orange circle, we've got your sources of revenue. Revenue from the Commonwealth, revenue from the local sources, other financing sources, and revenue from the federal government. Your FY22 adopted budget had three hundred and eighty thousand, that's it, not million. And then FY23 proposed is eight point five million, that seems big, is that a typo, or you're getting a big old handout from the federal government? I don't know, just pointing that out. But then, as I was looking at this, I thought to myself, oh my goodness, who pays all these taxes that you're getting your money scooped out of? Revenue from local sources, well, that's the Virginia taxpayer. Revenue from the Commonwealth, well, that's the Virginia taxpayer. Revenue from the federal government, well, that free money comes right out of the pocket of the Virginia taxpayer. I don't know about these other financing sources, maybe it's fees, I don't know what you guys do to make money, it ain't very much I can see that. You rape the taxpayer, that's what you do, that's your strategy. You've got it right here, unless there's a typo, you can clear that up later, I don't know. I think what we need here is a moment of silence for the Virginia taxpayer. And not much of one, because most y'all don't give a, you know what, oh my God, the curtain dropped, you gotta get that picked up. Most of y'all don't care about the Virginia taxpayer, okay? That's pretty clear for your actions. Now, you're listening to me, you're looking at me, but I can tell you right now, looking at these six supervisors, exactly what the vote on the budget's going to be. And it's not going to be to increase it from what you have here, and you say nine percent, you say nine percent, but the assessments, which one the gentleman here talked about, we've all been talking about, those assessments jacked up thirty-five percent. So the value you're taxing on top of the rate increase, yeah, that's free money, I know, I know. Forget about what I said about the taxpayer, he doesn't exist, you're getting free money, it's all good. But I can tell you the vote that you're going to make, it's going to be four to two. Won't be three to three, because that causes a problem, it'll be four to two, okay? And one of those guys, I know who's going to vote against it, okay? It's Brad, we know this, okay? Because Brad's the only one that does the numbers, and he's the only one that thinks about what these people are telling you about bad times, about having to make decisions whether they want to stay in Shenandoah County. He thinks about that, you don't. And then there's one other guy, his name, which Steve? Steve, yeah, Steve's up for election next year. So it's real important that Steve gets looked at as somebody who voted against the tax increase. So you go right ahead, Steve, and you do that, okay? Because we've seen this year in and year out, okay? So you guys don't care about the taxpayer, and I hope you go home and give them a moment of silence. I really do. I'm going to tell you a quick little story about the assessment. It's driving some of this, it drives your optimism about how much money you'll be able to get, how much you can grow government, government that provides very few services to most of us, okay? But it provides plenty of services to you, and that's fine. I'm going to tell you this quick story, it'll take thirty seconds. I have a farmhouse that nobody lives in because it's burned out, it's been burned out for four years. It was fifty thousand dollars when a guy lived there, okay? It got rated at over eighty-five thousand dollars in a drive-by assessment. If they had bothered to walk behind the house, they would have seen the whole thing's open to the weather. If they had looked as they drove by, they would have seen all the windows were boarded up, and the ones that weren't didn't have any glass in them, okay? That's thirty-five thousand dollars that you don't know about, other than, oh my God, we are a rich county. Let me tell you, we're not a rich county. Think about that.
Thank you.
Charles King, followed by Katie Reilly.
Personally, I can't see any purpose in raising our taxes one cent. It costs me six dollars for a freaking gallon of gas or diesel because the president won't open up the damn pipeline. Yet a thing, I see people that I've known for a long time that I could care less for. They've given me no help, I had a nice paying pony ride business, and people in this county that worked for the sheriff's department ruined it for me. I asked nothing from nobody, and I have worked hard, and I should be the one to decide what my property's value is, not you people. Nobody decided. my property's value is, not you people. Nobody decides for you and who your properties were. Maybe we should evaluate your property. I just don't understand, at a time when things are as bad as they are, you all want to increase it only five cents? Well, that doesn't matter. Two, three years ago, I sat in a meeting when the housing department, the new houses fell apart. The price went down. What was the solution? The people on the board wanted to raise our prices, increase the worth of our house, everybody's house, to make up the difference in the damn tax. That's crazy. It's asinine. We should be together in this and stop this tax craze. And there's only one or two that I voted for on this board, and you can get voted out the next time, too.
Katie Reilly followed by Tomasina Stampa.
All right. Hi, Katie Franklin, 2415, Woodstock District 3. I'm here tonight to ask you to adopt the current budget, and tax rate is presented with a specific emphasis on the importance of prioritizing education. According to the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Economic Research Service, education is tied to the economic prosperity of rural people and places. Median earnings rise with higher levels of educational attainment, but more so in urban than rural areas, compounding the rural earnings disadvantage stemming from lower educational attainment. Sadly, in the Commonwealth, quality education is dictated by zip code. Because Shenandoah County's funding resources are tied so heavily to local property taxes, the inequality among competing districts continues to significantly widen the achievement gap between the wealthiest and the poorest students. Until we, as a community, can see the value in making intentional proactive progress, both educationally and economically, we will be left behind. Our kids will be left behind. It's not enough to simply say that we need to diversify revenue streams, we need to act. And that starts with our schools. It starts by making a commitment as elected leadership to acknowledge, respect, and value the critical importance quality education plays in making all of our lives better here in Shenandoah County. A good first step is adopting the presented budget. Next steps, stop pulling from the unassigned fund balance, plan for the long term, and prioritize the requests of the school division moving forward. It takes strong leadership to get everyone rowing in the same direction to make progress. So, I implore that you and our school board work together to finally implement a long-term strategy to build state-of-the-art educational facilities to upgrade or replace our aging buildings. I implore you and our school board to work together to role model civility and high regard for our educational professionals, regard for diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging to encourage others in the community to do the same. I implore you and our school board to choose teamwork instead of divisiveness for the sake of our kids, who have no choice but to live with the decisions not always meet in their best interest. When we know better, we do better, right? We know that a high-performing, well-funded school division drives economic development by bringing in new business, new taxpayers, in addition to affording those in our own community better quality of life opportunities. Without your commitment and support, starting with this budget, our kids are at a disadvantage. The decisions you make are their lifeline up and out of poverty. Without your commitment and support, Shenandoah County never gets off the hamster wheel of reaction and inaction. Let your commitment and support be the spark that positively moves our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tomasina Stephan from Mount Jackson, and it's my first time. I've often watched you online. I just want to say something about the assessment process itself, the appraisal process. My first job was working for the Cuyahoga County Auditor's Office for the first mass appraisal of real property. And it was quite an endeavor to educate people that we were going from a property record card to a computerized system where we were going to be looking for similar properties in similar neighborhoods that had recently sold. When my husband and I got our assessment, we were shocked. I guess if we were going to sell our home, we would be happy, but where would you go? Trying to understand how our property was appraised was even for me, with a master's degree, a background at the county auditor's office, we had to dig and dig and ask and call. The appraisal process is still a mystery. I still don't understand the neighborhood that was used to compare our very, very unique property. So, if I had trouble understanding, I can imagine how other people who don't have a background in government. So, that's the first thing that I would really recommend, that in these times where everything is rising, to have more of an education process, so people understand how their property is appraised. And if they want to object, make it easier for them to understand what was used for the comparable properties. That's probably my biggest shock, or that the, it's a very un-user-friendly process. So, that's number one. Number two, with any kind of increase, I think most people understand that things are going up. Would you consider in the future some type of public education process? If you don't get the Northern Virginia Daily, or, I mean, how are people really supposed to know? The only newsletter we get from the school board is the annual report. This time, it was, the printing is so small, it's really hard to read, to try to understand about where the money is going. So, I just invite you to consider in the future, if you know that things are going to go up, to please have some type of public information campaign to help people understand where the, for example, the deputies that when Sheriff Carter came and presented the need for four deputies to help with crisis intervention, I mean, did that pass like immediately? Because people understand, especially with the pandemic, that a lot of the needs are, and I live in unincorporated Mount Jackson, so the police are right down, you know, two miles away, but in order, if there was a situation, the deputy sheriff would have to come. So, you know, people understood that, and I think supported it tremendously. So, I think if there's increases in the future, that if there was a, some type of outreach, some type of regular communication, so that I think people, you'd get more buy-in if people understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the only names that we have signed up. If there's anyone else who would like to come up and speak, there's the opportunity to do that now, we'll stay here until everybody goes through. Gina?
Good evening, members of the board. I had not planned to speak this evening. I'm Gina Stetter, 258 Stolscap Road, District 4, and I'm asking you to vote to pass the budget as presented this evening. Truly, I don't want you to raise my taxes. I don't want to pay any more for real estate, any more than anyone else, but I understand that you have to. Your job is very difficult to maintain our community and all of the services for a strong and healthy community for our citizens. I urge you to continue to move forward with the budget as presented. We need to make sure that we're not dipping into the rainy day fund. This budget helps move in that direction. Furthermore, we, and I have spoken to you in the past, last year, and we've talked about prevention, we've talked about ways to support our families and our students. So, certainly, the school board budget is critically important to me. I'm no longer employed with the school division, but I do have my sons there, and I know how important strong schools are for our community and for businesses to be interested in relocating here. I would also add for Northwestern Community Services Board and the Department of Social Services, response, those other services are critical to keep our families healthy, especially with the stresses that they have been under from the pandemic, substance use. The prevention that we do makes it better for our community down the road. I would also like to thank you for your consideration of reducing the personal property tax as the assessments on used vehicles has gone up. So, thank you for paying attention to that. One of the other speakers this evening spoke about distribution of the tax rate. Why does it have to keep hitting the homeowners? And I can't help but ask out loud, I wonder what would have happened if we would have passed the meals tax several years ago? Because that would have taken tax money, certainly from people within our community, but also from those traveling through. So, I offer that for just consideration. I have worked in various capacities with each one of you over the years. I know that you don't want to raise taxes for people. I know that your job is incredibly difficult, and that you are balancing so many competing demands. I trust you to make sure that you are asking for us, from us, only what is needed. I know that you're doing that as individuals that I've spoken to and worked with. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for those tough decisions that you make, and I'm grateful for what you do to make Shenandoah County a good, strong place to live. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Tony Wetzel. I live on Arts Road, as I have for 27 years now. I want to talk on two things that stood out to me as I scanned through the budget. I can see the cost of living increases across the board as needed. Of course, everybody needs a cost of living increase. But our chief deputy of treasury is getting a $20,000 increase, and our level four deputy is getting a $13,000 increase. That raises some questions on a conspiracy level, even though they are down to man. Another thing, we have 77 cars on our sheriff's insurance plan, but only 66 sheriff employees. Now, we want six new sheriff cars to go along with four new employees. What are the vacant 11 vehicles used for? People are struggling to put gas into vehicles and food on their tables. Now, the people are told to pay more tax on the land that we already own. My land itself went a 43%, which you would think is great, but not for someone who planned to stay here a lifetime. Now, you want to add another 9% to that? I am personally a 10th-generation farmer on Arts Road, and I can tell you, operating costs are at an all-time high. What happens when those costs get above a weakened growth? We gotta sell a 10-generation farm. Taxes play a big role in the operating cost when you own a decent amount of land, which is what it takes to make a profit. What happens when farmers start selling their land? We get city people buying crappy spec houses from a wealthy investor to bought that land from the farmer. That is not the vision I have for this historic county. This global pandemic has thrown people through some hoops, some of us dealing with unemployment, loss of a family member or a friend, some dealing with depression, and now a federal government that can't complete the sentence. Now, our local government wants to take more from us. Remember, this is rural Virginia. This is not a city in California. We, the people of Shenandoah County, do not need big flashes of progress. I would go out on a limb and say, most of us want quite the opposite, less government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
My name is Jimmy Bowers. I live at 1523 South Ox Road in Edinburgh, Connecksville. I didn't write anything down, this is my first time talking here, but with a 9% increase proposed tax, I have to wonder if anything we say here this evening will actually make a difference. When you've got a proposal that high, somebody's taxes is getting raised. And if, you know, just an ordinary person wants more money to fit their budget, they either, you know, if they're an entrepreneur, they've raised the prices and they hope that people pay for them. Of course, they got a chance, somebody can go someplace else. If they work for an employer, they have to go to the employer and ask them for money, say, hey, can you pay me some more to do my job? But every dollar that's accounted for on this sheet is ultimately raised under threat of force. Remember that when you vote on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say one thing, as usual. I think this is defeating a lot of the purpose of our governor trying to take the gas tax down on gasoline and the food tax down. You people want to set and raise our taxes up. I don't, you defeat the purpose of what he's doing.
My name is Scotty Roy, and I live at 38 Silas Street, Thomas Road. I have been in this county over 30 years. At one point, I did run for the school board. I have seen this county come downhill for 30 years, and you have lost businesses, you have lost manufacturing. There has not been that much growth as far as manufacturing goes in this county. You haven't, and basically, as an agricultural county, we should not be compared to surrounding counties such as Rockingham, Warren County, or Predator County. We do not have two or three colleges to help support our budget. We do not have the income from businesses or government businesses within the county. We are agriculture. We are one of the beautiful counties in this valley, and we do not want it disturbed. And if we can't keep the taxes down, to have our farmers to be able to farm, and the other ones living in this county to be able to support their families, then this county is gonna go by the wayside. I have lived in different counties, I have lived in different states. I have seen my home county go to pot, basically. It was not the place where I was growing up. It was overrun with housing, roads, and just, it was, to me, it was a mess. And they talked about the schools. Okay, why should we be comparing the children in our schools in this county with Rockingham, Warren, and Predator? Why not take our county and make our kids the number one at the tallest level and let the rest of them catch up with us? I said, this way, these kids are smart. I mean, I'm not saying that the kids aren't smart, they just need to be pushed. And I know from experience, because I've pushed my kids hard, and I know my parents pushed me. And make them curious about things, because that telephone doesn't tell them everything. They need books. They need to be curious about different things. And I said, other than that, this is a great county to live in. And I says, talk about, the lady was saying about the older schools. I had to laugh, because when I was in the seventh grade, I went to a school that was built on 19-year-old now, and that was quite some years ago. And those stupid stairs, and there was rust in the stairway where many feet had climbed those steps. And I says, they did build a new high school, they built a campus site, but they built it with progress in mind at the time, and everybody thought, why? And they had it as a campus hop, and it was great, and they have had room to expand. So, that's what I think. So, but that's what I think about Shenandoah County, it was a nice county to live in, but we've got to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Justin Pence, 21877, Sennado Road, Edinburgh, Mr. Pollack's district. Appreciate all that you all do, I know it's a thankless job, and it's a tough job for all of you, I know. But I first say that I'm a very frugal individual, and I encourage you all to be. I don't want to pay more taxes, but I understand that the county has to operate, and there are more expenses, so we've gotta do what we gotta do. Addressing the assessment, I've got several pieces of property and a farm outside of Woodstock, the value of it went up. That being said, I wouldn't take what they said it was worth for. And I challenge 95 or 98% of the people in the county, they probably wouldn't take what their assessment says their property's worth for their property. So, and I had one house beside mine, the value was too high. It's gutted, like Ms. Kalatowski said, hers was. I simply took five pictures, sent them into the reassessment, to the Board of Equalization, and they, they sent back a fair recalculation. During a mass appraisal, they cannot look at every house like you would if you were getting your house appraised to sell, they just can't, we couldn't afford that. So I think they did good for what they had to work with, so I don't have a problem with that, and I just encourage you all to be as frugal as possible. On education, I'm a public school graduate, I went away to college, came back home, bought a farm, we have a business here in Shenandoah County, it operates all over. You can do it, it can be done. So I encourage you to support the schools as much as you can, so we can have good students. A lot of, I mean, Josh is a public school graduate here in the county, there's nothing wrong with our schools if we just support them and continue to go like we've been going. So, again, thanks for all your time, and I don't, don't envy you for what decisions you have to make, but good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? No? No one else wishing to speak? We're gonna close these public hearings, meaning adjourned. I'm gonna gavel. Thank you all for coming out.